City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for August 6, 2018. May I have a roll call please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Thank you Emily, would you please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our God in the middle of the great chain of justice.
We have a proclamation tonight. Generally I read the proclamations, but this one's a little unusual, so I'm gonna have someone else do it.
A little special.
Special, okay, that's good.
This is a proclamation honoring David and Mary Brummel. I'd like to invite them to come on up.
This is a proclamation honoring David and Mary Brummel on their 50th wedding anniversary.
Whereas David and Mary were born and raised in Warrenville, and whereas David and Mary were married in 1968, and will be celebrating 50 years of marriage on August 10, 2018. And whereas their wedding was the first ecumenical wedding in Warrenville, and Mary's dress is preserved at the Historical Society to commemorate this event. Whereas David and Mary raised their two children, Ryan and Sarah, in Warrenville, and adopted two Dachshund siblings who they love and care for together. And whereas David constructed the majority of their home, and continues to remodel and improve their home, which is a source of great pride. And whereas David and Mary volunteer their time for many community activities, and stay active and enjoy riding their yellow tandem bike around the city. And whereas the City Council extend their very best wishes to David and Mary Brummel on the event of their 50th wedding anniversary, given under the seal of the City of Warrenville, the 6th day of August in the year 2018. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, this was a surprise. I found out about this this week, I had no idea it was gonna happen, and we didn't get this far by me hogging the limelight, so I'm gonna give my lovely wife a chance to say something first.
Well, my words I guess are just that through patience, and boy, it takes patience because I'm a preschool teacher, and a lot of hard work, and of course, support for each other. We've made it through 50 years, and I believe you, any marriage will tell you, we've had some ups, we've had some downs, but through the ways we've been able to work with each other, work with each other, we're still together, and I love him more today than I have ever loved him.
Several years back, there was a movie, I think the title was As Good As It Gets. It starred Jack Nicholson and Helen Hunt, and Jack Nicholson was courting Helen Hunt, and they went out for lunch together one day, and she sat down next to him and looked over and said, "Say something nice to me." And Jack hesitated for a moment, then he said, "You make me wanna be a better man." For 50 years, she's made me wanna be a better man. Okay, next on our agenda, presentation of Everton Mixed Use Project by Greg Collins of MI Homes. So Greg, the floor is yours. And my mother-in-law just arrived, Eleanor Vincent. Good evening Eleanor. You can watch this on film later.
Good evening Mayor, congratulations by the way.
Thank you.
And council members. My name is Greg Collins with MI Homes, and I'm here to present Everton. We are the contract purchaser of approximately 32-plus acres adjacent to Route 59, just south of the Butterfield and Route 59 intersection. We're requesting approval of a preliminary plat of subdivision rezoning, preliminary PUD permit, and PUD exceptions, variations, and other special approvals for various provisions of the Warrenville zoning ordinance. Those familiar with the site? Again, its location, as I just said, adjacent to the Route 59 corridor, the Route 59 intersection with what is now Duke Parkway, which was just constructed last year, is just north of the Illinois Prairie Path, and as you'll see, we actually connect through that path into locations, and is just south of the Ivan Albright Street. As part of this original petition, the direction from staff was to ensure that, based on the sub-area plan and the future development in this corridor, was to ensure that you, you know, control the frontage of Route 59, so that there's a cohesive development program. So we had to put forth the effort to go ahead and put under contract, again, we're the contract purchasers, these are not purchased properties, but we went ahead and worked out with the sellers of both the climate property and the properties at 29 West 741 Ivan Albright and 3 South 555 Route 59, which then combined gets you that 32 acres. So the assemblage then lent itself to a lot of different planning efforts, so original concept plans and discussions with staff, you know, changed over time to what you see tonight before you with the assemblage of these properties. Again, as part of the overall conversation with Warrenville, and what the goals and objectives were that were set in motion with the sub-area plan in this area, and to ensure that we incorporate these things into our plan based on the direction that the village gave us, which was not only the assemblage, but given some of the underlying land uses that were, given some of the underlying land uses that they wanted to see, was a combination of open space, multifamily uses, townhome uses, and commercial. So going to the drawing board, we introduced those different elements to the plan, so that, as you can see by these kind of checkmarks, these are all checkmarks that were noted and bullpointed in the sub-area plan, to make sure that we've encapsulated as much as we can into our program for Everton, which was a balanced land use pattern, you know, reflecting the market potentials, which you'll hear tonight, future connectivity to local streets, local pathways, obviously the extension of Duke Parkway, which has been constructed, improvements to streetways and gateways, so within the community itself, we have different monumentation and themed monumentation, which is more important to kind of reflect than the different land uses within the site with cohesive architecture as well. Design standards, we've been working with staff on coming up with an architectural approach to the buildings, that introduces a lot of nice materials, hardy siding, and brick elements. And as you will see with the overall plan, there's a significant amount of wetlands and floodplains that we have extensively been studying and working with staff on to ensure that the stormwater design has been incorporated appropriately according to DuPage County This is the overall plan. Main access to the site into Everton is at the controlled intersection with Duke Parkway in this location here, and a simple loop road coming in and through the community connects all the different land uses. We introduce an additional street network stub in response to both in-and-out access for fire vehicles. This will be controlled as a gated emergency access at this location, as well as a potential future access to Ivan Albright Street, and again, furthering that connectivity for this site north. The location of this entrance and exit is a right-in, right-out, limited access connection point to Route 59. This is based on our discussions with IDOT to date in relation to the distance that you have from the Duke Parkway intersection, and this site distance lent itself to not a full access, but a right-in, right-out, which again lent itself to that fire access for fire engines coming southbound utilizing Ivan Albright if they needed to, to get into the site with a full access turning movement on Ivan Albright rather than the right-in, right-out access that will be granted by IDOT in this location. As you come into the site, to your left is a three-and-a-half acre commercial parcel. In the packet, you would see some conceptual site plans, working with staff to understand how Camden Street, which connects both north to south and east to west, both the townhomes and the commercial, but to create an urban streetscape for Camden in relation to the commercial, so that the layout itself is more pedestrian-friendly in its environment with both the turning movements along Camden, the right-in, right-out off of Everton. So that site plan helps to lay out what could potentially be there. We don't have a purchaser for that, we're not marketing the site yet, but will there be some further restrictions, some urban design guidelines for this part of the property when we work at our final design for the community? In the center and on the north are the townhomes. To the east and to south, you have two pods of apartments, and they're combined and connected with a clubhouse in this location. You can see by the green scape along the east property line, which borders the Prairie Path, we connect at building four with a more pedestrian sidewalk, and we connect a bike path which runs all along the east property line, north to south, and we connect the bike path here. This again incorporating existing wetlands, enhancing the wetlands into this area where we compensatory storage the floodplain. We combine these facilities, creating one big, nice, open space feature, and I'll show you a couple pictures of how that's gonna look. This shows you the actual limits of the townhomes, the architecture, both the front, sides, and rears. You can see with the four-sided architecture, we've tried to incorporate a color scheme in both, as you'll see with the elevations from the apartments, a similar color scheme, a similar bulk characteristic in terms of a contemporary look. These are what we call a rear-loaded or row-home kind of design where the front, this identifies the front of the building, we've got four different floor plans, and a two-and-a-half story looking elevation, so it's an English basement in the front with a half-story, and then you'll see in the back, the full three with a tucked garage underneath the living space. So you can see with the side elevation, we forced the grade in the front to again provide that more pedestrian scale in the front, which is how we've incorporated into the actual design itself of the plan. As you come in, you'll see, we tuck the motor cords behind these units, bringing this elevation to the streetscape. Again, you get that stronger architecture, the stronger look and feel with both the brick colors. This is actually a gray brick with a black brick, and this will be hardy panel and hardy siding elements on the building. The apartments, like I noted earlier, two pods of apartments, seven total buildings. Again, bringing that three-sided, or I'm sorry, four-sided architecture, that we have a similar characteristic with the townhomes, again, trying to, since we've marketed or intend to market this site, and to create a sense of community with the word Everton, we then can feed off that, and you know, we have two different potential residents, we've got someone who's interested in renting and someone who's interested in buying, two different profiles, but folks that can still have a sense of community, along with the, again, urban design guidelines that we feel will feed off of the architecture that we promote here, and have a sense of community rather than a separate, to identifiable, different communities within Everton. We went ahead and tried to make them cohesive as possible. HKM designed this building, they're actually really cool, they've got both exterior, almost like, as if it was individually owned, but they're not, they're actually, rather than a corridored building, that you would have everyone's front door or door or access off of a corridor within the building, there's actually elements where you can see here, 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 you've got small stoops and access to the outside, you've also got individual one-car garage that accommodates a handful of residents within these buildings. So again, a very unique design, really cool features, something very unique to the actual rental communities that you're typically seeing in a suburban location, again, playing off the urban contemporary look to the building, which lends itself to this type of architecture and the way this building is used and lived in. This just gives you a sense of some of the interior features, just to give you a look and feel of how we stage it for the apartments with nice materials, again, more of an urban edge to some of the fit and finishes for that potential renter. Again, more streetscape look to both the front and corner views, to show you how and scale these look, although three stories, you can see by projecting out both balconies, screening off, you know, your front doors with kind of parapet walls coming out, providing different elements of color and materials to that, you really are able to then work that building in and out and provide a nice sense of scale and bulk look to what would be in a sense of a big rectangular building. There is a clubhouse, this will be shared by both the townhome buyers as well as the renters. This will be a fully amenitized clubhouse, we do have floor plans in the packet, this is the leasing office as well, but you can see, again, carrying that contemporary look and feel to the building, and bringing a nice sense of community to both outdoor spaces that you see here, which is reflected. There we go, too fast. Here with the shared pool element patio, and then we come across the pathway to a little seating area that's adjacent to the ponds, really nice stuff. Again, some of the wayfinding and signage, we intend on having an overall community introduction with a monument called Everton at the front entrance, you know, fully landscaped island as you come into the site, and then some way, so smaller monumentation like the towns of Everton, which would be located adjacent to where our townhomes start and where our model building would be. Stormwater design, like I mentioned earlier, again, along this eastern property line that runs northeast, southwest. The intent is not to have open manicured ponds, again, with stormwater quality, with the stormwater ordinance, these designs, much like the one we designed and looking great at Herrick Woods, incorporates both water quality features, again, natural setting all through here. This is actually a preserved wetland, farmed wetland area, so it at times will hold water minimal, raise up in storm events, and then come back down. So what you see here is typical, where that typical water level is, even though in storm events, this will be one full pond. We've been, again, like I said, we've been working with staff on a lot of the design elements for these, with final design if we get to that point, incorporating again the wetland features and enhancements that will be fully permitted, have a lot of sign-offs, but we've gone a long way to really ensuring that this design and landscape features along here will be appropriate. The townhomes, two and three-bedroom units, they range in size from 1,580 square feet up to 1,976 square feet. We anticipate with fit and finishes, lot premiums, that folks are gonna be in the low 300s with these townhomes. For the apartments, we've got an average unit size of around 933 square feet, but that range goes from a studio at 566 square feet up to 1,400 square feet, which is actually a three-bedroom unit. The net rent on average, buck ninety-one per foot, but in reality, in more of the nomenclature we're all used to, it's around 1,700 a month, that's before you pay for parking, if there's individual parking stalls, which could run you 100 to 125 a space. That was a quick synopsis, a quick snapshot of the site, I know there's a lot of questions that you might have, so feel free to fire away.
Thank you Greg. Questions or comments from the council? Alderman Davalos?
Thank you Mayor. The green space, that triangle over on the east side, that doesn't have a pond or anything in it, what sort of land, is that gonna be swampy, is it gonna be, can you walk there? Could you walk your dog there? Could you hike there if it wasn't a big rainstorm?
If you're referencing this top corner here?
Yeah.
Not really walkable, no, it's more of a, you have an existing wetland here, that if you've been out there, it's, it holds water consistently. We are going to clean out some of the invasives and enhance what is existing, and along with the compensatory storage, we'll have some cleanup, and then we have a myriad of seed mixes and certain plant species that actually work in tandem with the wetlands, so this is more of just an open space and not usable.
But you have sidewalks, as I read the review, there's a system of walking and biking.
Sure, throughout, that's a good point, throughout this Everton Drive, which is a publicly dedicated street, Camden Street, which runs north to south, you've got public sidewalk on either side, within, within both the apartments and the townhomes, you've got, of course, individual service walks that connects the buildings, and then an actual feature here that connects not only the apartments, but this sidewalk comes out to Everton Drive to connect to the Prairie Path.
Okay, and the last question is, all the entrances, you go up a set of stairs, but then you're in the building, right? So when you walk from your parking or from the sidewalk into your townhome or into your apartment, I guess the more I'm thinking of the apartments, you just walk up a half-flight of stairs and then you enter the building, is that right?
Yeah, and you know what, I can have a gentleman who will, with our partner on this, you know, we're the contract purchaser, but Atlantic Realty Partners is going to build the apartments, they can get in the details about how these buildings exactly work.
Could you give your name please sir? Your name?
Matt Chasso.
Thank you.
So the question being the use of the walk-ups for the apartments. So first-floor units will have direct access on the first floor into their unit, and then the second floor, each unit will have a stairway access, like you were saying, directly into their unit. The third floor however, so not every unit, has a direct access from the outside, the third floor, there is a common area, common entrance, goes up to the third floor, and then corridor to each unit's entrance.
I have a question about management of these apartment buildings. You're gonna develop them, you're gonna build them, going forward, who's gonna be in charge of the management? Is that gonna be you, is it gonna be a third party?
Atlantic Realty Partners, yes, us.
Okay, and you manage other similar developments in the area?
Yes, many, in the area and across the country.
So, and your intention is to remain the manager for the foreseeable future?
That is correct.
So you're gonna own them and manage them?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Ashauer?
How long do you typically hold on to apartments before you sell them?
That's traditionally up to our co-investors, but we are always open and push for a long-term hold, which would typically be 10-plus years. Some of our investors have requested a sale within five years, and through working with city staff, we are looking at complying with all the covenants that were in the staff reports for maintaining one entity ownership of the apartments, if it does go for sale.
Thank you.
And that is an important feature, one entity ownership, because we've had problems in town with multiple owners out of town, difficult to get hold of, which makes code enforcement very, very difficult, so.
Understandably.
That's good. Chief, Chief Ray Tronam, our chief please.
Thank you Mayor. Gentlemen, would you have a resident manager that's gonna live on-site?
Live on-site, they're welcome to, we do offer discounts for our managers to live on-site, but it's not required.
But there'd be one then assigned to this property that would be in the area?
Yeah, one, that wouldn't have shared responsibility, is that another property?
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Widener?
Yeah, you mentioned in your brief the potential for solar will be addressed in the final PUD, and I was just wondering if you have a statement about what the likelihood or possibilities would be of investing in that?
We're still evaluating the information that we have received so far from a feasibility standpoint. We're waiting on a final study to be completed, we should have that within the end of this week or early next week. Initial analysis, there's a portion of it that we think would be definitely doable to the scale at which we would have it on every rooftop, that's sort of what we're weighing right now, because of the incentives are, on paper, very good, but according to our consultants, it's, the future of it's a little bit unsure as to the value of those.
At construction time, are the ports for the wiring reasonably priced enough to put into the different apartment units?
We're evaluating that as well, and it looks like that would be, at the very least, a cost efficient approach.
And when will you reach a final determination on the solar question?
Within a few days after we receive the final feasibility study.
Okay. What's the schedule for the feasibility study?
We should have that by the end of this week or early next week.
Okay. The, there was a trail or side path for pedestrians and bicyclists that was shown at the front of the project, and from reading the material, I understand that it's 10 feet wide, and I'm wondering whether that's asphalt, or whether that will be concrete or gravel?
Asphalt bike path.
Asphalt, okay. And then, I'm not clear, I know there were some concerns over stairs and elevators in the apartment complexes. Could you address how people will be moving into the third floor, and how, you know, perhaps somebody that might be disabled, either temporarily or permanently, would be able to access their living arrangement, either by stairs, elevator, or, I'm not, I'm not sure what the configuration is?
So like I was trying to, Alderman Devos, the first and second floor will have their own private entry, second floor through stairs, all third floor units would have a common area entry into the building, two flights of stairs up to the third floor, and into a common corridor, five and a half feet wide, that, then they'd have access to the units. As far as accessibility, the first floor units would be our ADA compliant units, that, of the percentage, I'm not exactly sure, but the accessibility for someone that would need a second or third floor wouldn't, yes, be an option?
So there's no fallback emergency elevator service?
No.
If I lived up there and broke my leg playing basketball or something like that, I wouldn't be able to, I'd have to muscle my way up the three floors?
We would make every reasonable effort to relocate you within the community. And we've done that in the past, we have similar developments that have features where all floors have access through stairwells without elevators for the sec, first, second, and third floor.
Okay. My other question is, there's a, quite a long summary of the PUD variations and exceptions. The one that caught my eye is reducing the building foundation landscaping from 20 feet to approximately 10 feet around the townhouse buildings, and to approximately 15 feet around the apartment building. Could you provide rationale for the reduction of landscaping?
Sure. Similar to, if you've ever been out to Herrick Woods, in terms of, in many of the communities that we build, you can get a lot of that landscaping foundation, impact landscaping easily within 10 feet. A 20-foot doesn't get you any more material, per the code, it just, it gets you, we can squeeze that amount of material that's appropriate for around a landscaping foundation, or around the foundation of a building, well within that 10-foot range. So in terms of the material, the scope of that material, the species that staff looks at, we can achieve that same quantity in those same kind of distances from, from the building itself.
And what do you envision as far as the 10-foot area of landscaping around the front? I know that you're planning native varieties and will be removing invasives from the wetland and the areas that you intend to naturalize, but I can't draw a picture from your submittal on what type of landscaping or what you're looking at that will establish, help to establish the character of the townhomes and apartment area?
Let me see, we had probably over 60 slides, we had a bunch of extra ones, but let me pull up, I don't know if we had the individual foundation landscaping, to show you that, you know, with each individual building design, you know, with each individual building design, either a four-unit, a five-unit, or a six-unit building, we've got foresighted, extensive landscaping, I mean, and Ron does a great checks and balances on the review part, to ensure that those species be a good variety, can weather storms, more importantly, from a maintenance standpoint, isn't consistently dying, isn't invasive. Even at Herrick, based on the forest preserve input, we did not incorporate any burning bushes, as that is an invasive species. So knowing that kind of knowledge, we incorporate that into the plan.
The, the plan seems to have a lot of open space that's, I guess, required for wetland areas and detentions. What, I, and I seem to have seen a reference to a tot area, is that the area that you were referring to, outside the community building that you referred to? Is that a active play area?
The, oh, the clubhouse?
Yes, near the clubhouse.
Yeah, and again, which one? Yeah, this doesn't show, I got a better one, let's see. See it here, and there's a, there's a, there's a full site plan in there, with this clubhouse feature here, which has that courtyard here. So this is the outside, this is the outside lawn, this is the front of the building.
Are there dimensions attached to that? Is there any way that you can describe the width and length of those common areas?
Let me see, I've got a, I apologize, we got, I've got a full clubhouse, here's another perspective, okay. Tot lot, this is the connection that goes out east to the Prairie Path, this is the pool, I don't know, what's the square footage of this building roughly, you know off the top of your head? No? This is a covered 7,000 square foot building, you can give us an idea of scale with, with the car. And then this is, again, another outdoor covered seating area that someone might use as a, you know, let me run it out for a birthday party, and again, this is built up against that pond, so that pond overlook feature.
Okay, are pets going to be allowed in both the apartments and the townhomes?
Townhomes, yeah.
And what about the apartments?
Apartments as well.
Have you made any kind of accommodation? I know we had a project in town that is being built, that made an accommodation for, for pets, and I, and as far as a dog walker exercise area, and I just wondered if you've included any of that in your green space provision, and where people might go to walk their, their dog or animal?
For the apartments that I can speak to, the entire site for the apartments is pet-friendly, so they can walk their dog within any of the green space that they have access to.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Goodman?
So you, you talked a lot about the bike path, are there going to be a lot of bike racks throughout the site?
Yeah, we actually, we're, we're staff to make sure that they're located appropriately, especially along... There's got to be a quick way to do this. Especially along Camden, again, to create the pedestrian friendly environment that this street wants to be with its parallel parking, there will be bike racks here, bike racks in front of the leasing, and then we'll, based on this last design that we came up with, and working with staff on a final PUD design, incorporate them, again, clubhouse and where it makes sense to put, to put bike racks.
All right, because I, I can't quite imagine if I live in a two-story staircase apartment trying to carry a bike up to get it inside my house all the time. I mean, you might do it sometimes, but all the time, that would be a little bit rough if there aren't bike racks near the apartment buildings.
Yeah, I don't know if we've detailed them exactly on this plan, but I believe we have, yeah, we'll have bike paths at each building.
So one of the comments I got the most from residents had to do with these two-story staircases outside, and certainly on the elevations that are pictured here, they don't look like an outdoor staircase that goes all the way up to the second floor. So how does that work? Can we talk about that just a little bit more? Because an outdoor staircase can get kind of icy in winter, is that going to be maintained and de-iced by the association?
Excuse me. So the entrances to the first floor, right here, are obviously not in the exterior of the entrance, but the second story access stairs right here actually go up and are enclosed, so you don't have an exterior.
They only look like a few stairs in the outside.
Yeah, so the stoop here, stoop here is, one thing we've worked, been working with our, our management team on, coming up with the best plan of whether it's going to be contracted services with our snow removal that will maintain those, or just that particular stoop, not including the walkway up to the stoop, but the stoop itself would be the residence maintenance control.
Okay, the residence maintenance control in the sense of?
They would clear it and de-ice it, yeah.
Okay.
Again, we're work, we're working on that with our operations team, it's...
And I can speak to that, not that I build apartments, but what we do in all of our townhome communities, we've done thousands, and what we found is that to make the residents happy and to be on top of it, once they close, we give them a bucket of, of the icier, because there's not enough folks that are in the management world to show up when someone needs it, and so even though an HOA might, in our instance, might actually own and have to remove that sidewalk eventually, when it comes to the everyday, there is not enough management folks or people on the ground to be at people at different time to chisel off ice or something, that's why there's, the icers put on the main access points and in parking areas, but when it comes to individual stairs to an individual unit, the homeowner has a much better time to get on that as quickly as they can. That's how we've treated it in a lot of our townhome units, because again, we, I have a stoop, and as we're proposed with ours, there's a small stoop, and we shovel those service walks and clear them, but you can't be there as often as you, as you'd like to be on certain snow event, and especially icing events, which doesn't bring out plows, it doesn't bring out service folks, it's different.
Okay, I mean, my association gives us a bag of salt every year, every winter, to deal with our walks, and I live in a townhome here in Morenville, and they are responsible for snow removal after it gets to be two inches.
Two inches and above, right.
But under two inches, we, we got to take out the bag of salt.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. My last question is, if this is approved, what do you see as the timing of the build-out? And I mean, all the different phases, including the commercial property?
As for the townhomes, we look at probably a three and a half, four-year build-out. That would be with a construction start next, you know, beginning part of next year. As for the apartments?
From start to finish, we're looking at an 18-month timeframe, from breaking ground to last units rentable.
And for the commercial, that will depend on marketability, obviously, what interest there is in the site. I think, and I've told this to staff, I think this property becomes way more identifiable when you see streetlights, landscaping, a streetscape, you see buildings going up, and the more buildings that go up, the more it's successful, there's buyers, there's people, I think the marketability of that site becomes a heck of a lot more interesting. Given it's three and a half acres, you know, a possible outlot program where it's, it might be multiple ownerships, it could be one, but those will start to vet themselves about individual users, a lot more standalone users these days that are interested in sites rather than, you know, a strip mall, it's different. So with that, I think, given the 18-month that he said, and ours, you know, 48, I think within that timeframe, you might see the commercial go up with, could be a, you know, a five-year, you know, six-year time horizon, quite possibly.
Alderman Berry?
Thank you. I also live in a condominium complex here in Morenville, and we receive salt in our main entryway, and are asked to, when they can't come around and shovel, you know, as often as we would like, that we're asked to actually throw the salt out, so, and it helps for everyone that lives in the building. I also have my own salt that I use in my own driveway, because it's pet-friendly, and, and I have a, a pet. So my question is, can you explain a little bit more about these, the parking in the apartments? What do you mean by attached parking, and then the detached parking? Is there, is, do you have parking for visitors that's separate? Can you just go into a little bit more depth on that?
Sure. So there's... So there's a handful of garage spaces built in into the buildings, and then... Here, all the blue, is that right? The blue is the outdoor driveway for the garage, so that's a parking space, and then the yellow highlights the indoor portion of that, of the garage. And then we have all of our outdoor, yeah, over building, and then we have our detached, enclosed garage spaces as well. And guest parking, we have some dedicated guest parking in front of the clubhouse, we have some in front of the clubhouse along the Camden, Everton, and then there's guest parking, there isn't assigned parking throughout the lot, and so depending on if you have a little bit of overflow, then we have guest parking all throughout the site.
So if you have, pay for this attached parking, it's assigned to you?
Correct.
And then the detached, how, how do you know that that, is that also assigned?
The detached garages? Yes, those are assigned as well.
Okay, and then how many parking spaces do you have per unit, basically?
The ratio is right up, you're approximately 1.91 per unit.
That's it, thanks.
And the 1.91 per unit, how do you arrive at that number? And how does that compare to our ordinance? Is there a relief that you're asking, or is that better than what our ordinance requires?
We're asking for a relief. The ordinance that, I believe it's two per unit, and we're pretty close there, and that's actually a very high ratio for our typical developments. We usually see anywhere in the range between 1.5 to 1.75.
Okay, and at what point do you see that you have problems with parking? When you get down below a certain number, that you actually start to have problems with your management?
We have one as those 1.45, and we haven't had a problem.
Okay, is that a newer building or an older one?
Yeah, two years old.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Alderman Ashauer?
Is the one with the reduced parking close to public transportation?
Sorry?
Is the building with the reduced parking close to public transportation? You said you have a unit, a property that has parking at 1.4?
Yeah, that one has a general close proximity to...
Is it close to public transportation? Is it?
Yeah.
Close to the trains, that type of thing?
Close to bus service, no train.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, thank you for that presentation. That was a presentation, and we will have time for citizens' comments at some point later in the program here. I would like our Community Development Economic Director to add to this presentation a little bit with a question that I frequently get, I'd like him to answer that question for you before we move on. And what we're going to do is, we're going to ultimately, this will certainly be pulled off the consent agenda, so we'll be voting on this separately. What we'll try to do is get our consent agenda out of the way, so the folks that are here for those items don't have to sit through the whole evening. So you will have, if you came here to speak, you will have the opportunity to speak, so please be patient. Ron, the question that I get frequently, and I think it's a very good question, and you've answered it before at the public hearing, if you could give us, again, some insights as to how does this fit in with city plans, and what benefits will this project offer for the community?
All right, I'll do my best to try to keep it brief and focused. I thought maybe to answer the, the best way to answer the first part of your question would be to provide just a brief overview of what I believe to be the three key planning documents that, that really lay the policy foundation for the project that was just presented. documents that really lay the policy foundation for the project that was just presented, and talk about specifically some of the key conclusions that were arrived at during the development of those policy documents, and the most important goals and objectives that are contained in those policy documents as it specifically relates to this particular project. The first document that the city recently prepared is the new strategic economic development plan. The city started that process in 2012, ultimately leading to a adoption of a new strategic plan with a very detailed economic development plan component in 2015. Early on in that planning process, the city was performing a fair amount of, I would say, an extensive amount of public outreach, which included neighborhood dialogue meetings and a community survey, and there were two key themes that were of input that were coming back to the city through that process. First and foremost, the community really appreciate, seemed to really appreciate the high-quality services that were being provided by the city of Warrenville within a relatively conservative fiscal policy framework. And what I mean by that, the city has consistently had a balanced budget, virtually no debt to the general fund, and a very, has taken a lot of effort and pride in developing a very diversified revenue stream, so we're not relying entirely on property taxes. Kind of going along with that, the second piece of input is that people really expected the city to maintain those high services and relatively fiscal conservative approach, and they felt that the Route 59 corridor offered a good opportunity for some new economic development that would further expand the city's tax base, number one, and secondly, hopefully end up providing some commercial retail and restaurant uses that aren't readily available in the city of Warrenville at this point in time, that people need to generally drive out of town to go to. During the, after we received that, that feedback, the city hired TESCA and Associates and Business Districts Incorporated to assist us in the finalization, final preparation of what turned out from being just a strategic plan to a strategic plan and a economic development plan with a lot of detailed goals and objectives that would help us achieve economic development throughout the community, but there was a heavy focus on what was gonna happen out in the Route 59 corridor. During that process, there was a lot of specialized outreach to various community groups overlapping taxing districts, residents again, business owners, realtors, and real estate professionals that worked in the Warrenville market area to, to better understand what their perspective of the community was from a, an economic development perspective. There was a detailed evaluation of the city's position from a market perspective in the local or general area mark, real estate market, and a couple of key conclusions that came out of that analysis and that input include that there was a recognition that the city had really too much property, especially in the Route 59 corridor, that was either zoned for or planned for commercial development. The conclusion through that evaluation process was that we just don't have enough rooftops to support the amount, we didn't have enough rooftops, and people were spending power to support the amount of commercial development that the city was planning for and hoping to achieve in the Route 59 corridor. What that led to is a second kind of recognition that newer, high-density, high-quality residential development, including apartments, should be a core component of the city's economic development philosophy going forward. Ultimately, the city did adopt the strategic plan, economic development plan, and many of the specific goals and objectives in that plan reflect the fact that the city was scaling back on the amount of commercial that was expected and planned for, but in lieu of that, looking to develop a more, some more dense residential development, especially in the Route 59 corridor and specific locations that were deemed to be, that hadn't yet been identified, but would be deemed to be appropriate locations for that type of housing. As soon as the city completed the sub, or that strategic plan, economic development planning process, we moved into developing a detailed revised subarea land use plan for Route 59 Southwest District area, about a 348, 340-acre area that really encompassed the whole Southwest quadrant of the community. Ultimately, that plan was approved by the city council in 2016. The land use goals for that, that are contained in that plan really reflect the project that's being proposed tonight. In fact, in some of the, one of the slides I saw, they had a, an excerpt of the land use exhibit from that plan, and it showed a combination of some retail, mixed-use project with retail, multifamily, and open space on the property that's currently being proposed for development with the Everton project. The land use plan also highlighted the importance of providing appropriate infrastructure in the Southwest District, attending to stormwater management, drainage issues, which are pretty prevalent and extensive throughout the district, preserving, enhancing natural areas, creating environmental, environmentally sustainable open spaces, enhancing pedestrian and bicycle access, and last but not least, establishing or creating a inviting front door to the city of Warrenville for those that are traveling northbound on Route 59. Kind of as we move through the final stages of the preparation of the revised subarea plan for the Southwest District, it became clear that it would be potentially beneficial to create a new TIF district in that area of the community, so the city began the process to evaluate the possible establishment of a TIF district in that area. Ultimately, in 2016, the city council approved the Southwest District Route 59 corridor, TIF number four redevelopment plan in TIF district, and it covers about 300 acres of the Southwest District, including, you know, most, if all not, all of the property along Route 59, north and south, immediately north of, south of, I should say, yeah, immediately north and south of the Route 56 intersection. And the main goal of that plan was to revitalize the area as a strong and attractive mixed-use corridor, which would contribute to the health and vitality of the city. The detailed goals and objectives that are contained in the Southwest District plan are exactly the same detailed goals and objectives that are contained in the strategic economic development plan and the Southwest District plan. From the staff's perspective, we've obviously spent an enormous amount of time working with MI Homes on this particular project, and from day one, we were very clear on what the city's goals and objectives were as reflected in these various key planning and policy documents. And I can say from a professional perspective, I feel confident that the development that MI Homes is being, is bringing forward for consideration tonight is extremely, extremely consistent with those goals and objectives that are outlined in those plans. Some of the, the specific benefits that I think that would accrue to the city or to the community, it's not just to the city, to the community if this project did go forward. This project represents a huge investment. It's a quality project, the project has a val, would have a value of about $73 million. This area of our community has not seen a whole lot of investment over the last thirty years for a variety of reasons, but the fact that if we have a high-quality developer that would come in and make that type of investment and build a high-quality product or a high-quality development that's consistent with the goals and objectives of our plan, I think would be a, an asset to the community and a benefit to the community, involves the assemblage of properties so that we avoid piecemeal development. I know that when we first met with MI Homes, they only had the, the climate property under contract, and they were somewhat resistant to adding the additional pieces. It added costs, it added complication, they're not, there's some wetland issues on one of the pieces that they have to now deal with, that they maybe could have avoided, but they ultimately did it because that's what the city's plans call for. The quality of the homes that are being, townhouses that would be built in this project are, I think, desirable from a community perspective. We don't generally, we don't have any rear-loaded attached townhouses in our community at this point in time. From a design standpoint, I agree with the developer's presentation that they make a much better presentation to the streetscape by not having a townhouse with a row of garage doors that's oriented towards the, the street, rather than having an attractive, rather, you would have an attractive architectural design, including high-quality building materials. The project does have nice amenities, including the clubhouse pool complex. They've taken a lot of time to work with staff to come up with a creative design that really emphasizes kind of the pedestrian and human character of Camden Street, so that Camden really is not a street that divides and separates the commercial from the residential, but rather connects the two developments and invites pedestrian activity and human activity. Another benefit to the community is that we would have the opportunity to work with a, what I believe to be a high-quality, competent, and professional developer. There's a lot to be said about that in my career, twenty-five, or thirty-five years doing this. We worked with MI Homes on the Herrick Woods development, and we found them to be extremely professional, responsible, and responsive, so whenever we had issues, they would respond to those issues. And to the best of my knowledge, the people that live in that project like that project and perceive it to be a nice neighborhood. This is a comp, this would be a complex project, it's a complex site for a variety of issues, including access with IDOT, the assemblage of properties, wetland, floodplain, stormwater management, and, and I think that this developer has a track record with us, I know this developer has a track record with us being able to implement it. We have not worked with Atlantic Partner Realty directly up to this point in time other than through the entitlement process for this project, but I did call the Village of Glenview, that's the closest community that has the most similar type of apartment development that they recently built and continue to manage. It was completed in 2015. The architecture looks different, but it's a very similar type project with similar price points, similar type of design elements and amenities, and when I talked to their community development staff, they said that the project was implemented flawlessly, they don't have any issues since it was constructed, and they and their elected officials repeatedly point to that project as an example of the high-quality type of development that they are trying to continue to encourage in their development or in their community. I would also add that if you just Google Atlantic Realty Partners and look at their website, you can see they're a national developer, and their portfolio of projects is high-quality stuff. These, this group does not build poor-quality development. Another benefit from the city's perspective, I believe with this type of development, is a very efficient public infrastructure system. And what I mean by that is that when you, when you compare the, the amount of infrastructure, public infrastructure that would be implemented in this project to support approximately estimated 697 people, it's probably less public infrastructure in that project than there would be if this property was developed with detached single-family homes. That, the road network would be much more spread out, there would be more sewer and water, and more public sidewalks that would have to be implemented with a straight, single-family development on this particular property. Why is that good for the city? Because we have a capital maintenance and replacement plan, and we, we save money each year to fund that. In this case, the amount of money that we would have to save to fund that plan for this particular project would be probably less than if it was developed with a single family, yet on the other side of the coin, the amount of tax revenue that would be generated by this project would be substantially more. I think through the testimony that has been provided at the various public hearings between, at the plant commission level, and the analysis that city staff has provided on this project and the city's consulting engineers have provided on this project, I think we're all confident and comfortable with the statement that have been made, statements have been made by the developer, that they will address existing drainage, drainage problems in this area and actually improve those drainage problems to a certain extent. They're gonna be providing a stormwater detention system on this project that will collect and hold the theoretical 100-year storm event. There's like more than 400, 4 million gallons of water that's associated with that storm event that's gonna be stored on this property. They're also increasing the amount of floodplain volume that's available on this property, or they would be on this property, they're increasing the area, enhancing the quality of the wetlands on this property if this project is approved. From an economic development standpoint, there'd be 348 new homes or households that would be created with this project. The average annual household income is projected to be about $75,000, which is consistent with the average household income across Warrenville at this point in time. These households will certainly have some disposable income to support existing businesses in our community, and they will certainly make this area of our community more attractive to new businesses that I would, that I've heard the community, various community members say they would like to see happen in this area. I can tell you that in my career in Warrenville, this is not a forgotten area. We regularly meet with and discuss development opportunities in this area with property owners, real estate brokers, and potential developers, and one reoccurring theme of why development has won, it's not the only one, but it's one of the more important ones, is that the density and household demographic, you know, density of the Warrenville community at this point in time just doesn't support, or this area doesn't really support the type of commercial development that we would like to see. All the open space that surrounds Warrenville, Warrenville is a wonderful thing, it helps make Warrenville, it's a big part of what helps make Warrenville what it is, insulates its, insulates us and separates us from some of the surrounding municipalities, but there's no people in, in the forest preserve that spend money in the community. So those additional households is something that we repeatedly hear that would be beneficial to help support the type of additional commercial that we would like to see, this project would help make that happen. There's, from my perspective in reviewing the detailed fiscal analysis that's been performed for this project, I think there is a clear and significant, long-term, overall positive benefit to all of the taxing bodies if this project would happen. During the life of the TIF district, it is located in a TIF district, the school district, which is like 63% of everybody's tax bill, would be made whole each year for any impacts that they would have from this particular project. After the TIF district is completed, in today's dollar, they would have a net positive revenue, this project would have a net positive revenue effect of somewhere close to $700,000 a year. I think there's some merit and value in having a diversified housing stock available in the community, as I mentioned. The rear-loaded townhouses is not something that we currently have in our community. The most closely related example of the type of apartment project that's being proposed tonight is the Cantera Apartment Project. That project has been basically at full capacity since it was built, 97.6% occupancy, I mean, there's always people coming and going, so there's always gonna be some vacancy. Recently, that project sold for seven, it's like a 15-year-old project, it sold for $74 million. It sold for $74 million because there's such a demand for that type of housing, not just in the city of Warrenville, but in and adjacent to the IADA corridor in DuPage County. So I think having a diversified housing option, housing options such as this, they're very much catered and designed to attract young professionals and millennials would be very good for the community. Those people come to our community, they occupy these types of housing, and when they start having children and are looking to have a single-family home with a yard, hopefully they'll find, they have found that Warrenville is a wonderful community to live in, and they'll go support and find a single-family house, so strengthen the, the single-family housing network in our community. And then last but not least, I think a benefit, a significant benefit is the pretty important pedestrian and bicycle network improvements that would be constructed as part of this project. Talked about it tonight, the developer highlighted the fact that they're going to be installing a third-mile-long, 10-foot-wide bike trail along the Route 59 frontage of the property from Albright Street on the north edge down to an interconnecting with the Prairie Path. There's 1.8 miles of additional public and private sidewalks that will be installed throughout the project, including another sidewalk pedestrian connection to Illinois Prairie Path. All of these bicycle and pedestrian improvements are things that the city has been planning for and are reflected in the city's pedestrian and bicycle long-term plan. So those are kind of my highlighting of the, what I see the biggest benefits for the community if this project goes forward.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions from the?
Any questions from the council to Ron? Alderman Hoffman.
If you take the commercialized development, how much is the residential portion worth?
If you give me a minute, I can find it. It's in the economic analysis. I think the commercial part is maybe six or eight million dollars is what I remember in, of the seventy-three million. So the majority and the bulk of it is associated, the bulk of the values associated with the residential component.
So if we didn't have the TIF in place right now, what would be the income, what would be the residential property tax paid to the city of Warrenville for the residential portion?
So if the TIF, the TIF wasn't in place, how much residential property tax revenue would the city receive on an annual basis if it was complete?
Correct.
I don't have, I don't have that number available right here handy. I can get that number and provide you. What I have is that if the TIF was not in place, the annual total tax revenue, which is a combination of a variety of taxing, tax revenue sources for the city, would be like four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars per year.
So if, how many residents are going to be there?
There are estimated to be six hundred and ninety-seven residents.
Six hundred and ninety-seven? And there's how many units?
Three hundred and fifty-nine, is it?
Three forty-eight.
Three forty-eight.
So we got basically about five percent of the, going to raise the city's population by five percent?
Haven't done the calculations. Yeah, about that, yeah, that's about it.
And let's say just for the property taxes coming in off, that would be about a hundred and thirty maybe to the city, maybe a hundred and forty. So that's less than five percent. What the project probably should be bringing in, considering that the city gets three hundred, or gets three and a half million dollars for a complete city population.
All right, anyone else? Alderman Davalos?
I have a comment and two questions. On the city website, in the development of this Everdine property, there is, I have here the executive summary of the economic impact, which is pretty enlightening actually and much easier to read than the, I don't know, sixty, eighty pages, the economic. And it says the frozen EVA right now is fourteen thousand, I don't know, nine hundred or something. So without the TIF, I don't even see this developing. But my question to you is, I've gotten some comments and calls on, on a line, a paragraph in this executive summary about when the TIF is over, that the property taxes we receive will be thirty-four, around thirty-four thousand dollars less than, than, than what the cost is going to be. But my understanding in drilling down the details of this is that the, the calculation that was made on that assumes that we will be hiring, or at least one of the things, we will be hiring, I think it was three point nine employees to cover this development, which we have four developments now and I don't think we'll have sixteen employees or thereabouts. I, I think it's an overreach, but is, I, I, can you expand on that just a little bit? Because I think it's misleading if you just take that paragraph by itself.
Let me, let me kind of summarize it this way, because the, the report clearly says that in the executive summary and then in the body of the report, that during the life of, this is during the life of the TIF district, it's projecting that on an annual basis, this project will, the city will receive approximately thirty-four thousand dollars less in property tax, or in total tax revenue, not just property tax, but all tax revenues than what it's going to cost the city to serve that project, based on the assumption that if, if and when this project is complete, the city's going to add three point three six new employees. So if we add three point three six new employees when the project's all done, said and done on an annual basis, based on the projections contained in the report, the city will, it will quote-unquote "cost" the city thirty-four thousand dollars a year to have this project in place. You know, I, I really question the, the need to add three point three six employees for this type of development. I think that's a, would probably be very unlikely from the city's perspective. But I would like to, to add some additional information that when the TIF is expired, again, assuming that we had added the three point three six new employees, the project would generate a surplus of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in total tax revenue to the city on an annual basis after the TIF is complete. Again, that's, those are just the projections. I don't know if, hopefully that helped clarify, clarify it a little bit. I would also, I think it's worthwhile, maybe it's because I've been around for a long time, is that, you know, what we're talking about for potential impacts to the city, it's the same thing that happened when Cantera was, you know, starting out. It was a hole in the ground and the city put a TIF district in place and if the, the city did add new employees to help manage and control that development and we didn't get any property tax revenue through the whole development of the Cantera TIF to assist the general fund. So I don't know that anybody did the evaluation ever to, you know, assess exactly how much it costs the city on an annual basis to get that project done, but I would argue that it was a wise investment from the city's perspective, whatever it costs, because once that project got done, the city's, like more than fifty percent of the total tax revenue that the city collects on an annual basis is in some form or another directly related to what happened in Cantera. And if we didn't invest upfront to make that happen, that project wouldn't have happened. So I think sometimes you can't be so short-sighted that you might have some small deficit during the TIF. I think in the end, the long-term positive impacts of this type of project will be significant to all the taxing districts.
Yes, I, I agree with you, but I think a lot of people concerned about the development had questions about that, so I kind of wanted you to clarify. And also during the life of the TIF, as far as TIF dollars, what are they estimating? One point nine million?
Yeah.
A year? I mean, you, you can't use it for everything, obviously, but it'll, a lot will go back to the taxing districts and the schools and all kinds of things. So I think there's benefits that, if you read the whole report, there's a lot of benefits. Thank you.
Alderman Ashauer?
Just a comment. It is not appropriate to compare the Cantera TIF with this project. Cantera was a, primarily a large commercial development with a lot of tax revenue being generated, jobs, as little impact as you could truly expect for the size of the development and as small impact on city services as you could expect because of the commercial development. This is, this is our first development, the TIF, and it's, that's the second development, I'm sorry. We have a townhouse development across the street that we're not talking about, but the, this is purely residential. And to frame it the same way as Cantera, we, we have a, a large increase in residences who will be using city services, Park District, Library, Fire Protection District, and there won't be any revenue going to those districts. The school district will get their share, but unless we spend the money for the other taxing districts within the TIF, they won't get anything, which means they can't, the Fire Protection District is a good example. Who's going to pay for the ambulance calls? Probably the rest of us. So I, I don't, comparing the two TIFs is not appropriate. This is going to have a net loss for the community, may cause tax increases, and that hasn't been highlighted nearly appropriately enough.
Ron?
I, I would just say that it's not just the school, just to make sure the facts are out there, the, the school district gets made whole during the life of the TIF for any expenses that they incur, you know, the, the city is required to use TIF revenue that's generated by the development to reimburse the school district on an annual basis. The city is also required to reimburse the library district on an annual basis for each and every resident that is generated within the TIF district with TIF funds at the same rate that this, the, the library district, the per capita rate that they would receive if they were assessing taxes in that, that area. So essentially, the, the library district would be made whole. And it's my understanding that the Fire District has adopted an ordinance that requires that if they provide ambulance service, that the people that get that service are required to reimburse the Fire District.
Anyone else on the council? Alderman Widener?
Is there a contribution to the Park District, too?
Yeah, there's about a million-dollar, it's not to the Park District, it's to the city for park purposes and under the policy that the city council just, or city code amendment the city just approved, that money can be remitted to the Park District for either land acquisition for new park space and/or improvements to existing park facilities.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we'll conclude then our presentation portion of the meeting tonight. We'll move on to citizens' comments not related to this development. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make a citizen's comment about any of the other items on our agenda this evening? Okay, and remember, we'll take citizen's comments when we get to the point of the council deliberation on this item, so that's coming up. We'll go then to official and staff comments. I have a couple for this evening. The first would be to, to thank everyone that had anything to do with Summer Days. It was another great festival in town where people have the opportunity to bring their families for an inexpensive good time. Our show is always enjoyable, the music is always enjoyable and visiting with neighbors is always enjoyable. It takes an enormous effort of volunteers to make this happen. So on behalf of the community, I thank all those volunteers and for people who also came to the programs and enjoyed them with the community. I have a congratulations for one of our young members in the community. Katie Costner was the winner of the DuPage County Fair Talent Competition on July twenty-first, where she sang and accompanied herself on the ukulele. She'll be heading down to Springfield on January nineteenth, representing Warrenville and DuPage County in the state finals. Katie is fourteen years old and has lived in Warrenville for eleven years and loves to call our city home. She was active at the Johnson School Chorus and variety shows, as well as appearing in musicals and with the Show Choir at Hubble Middle School. She's starting high school this month at Wheaton Warrenville South and will be a member of the Show Choir and Theater Department there. So good luck, Katie. Well done. That's pretty cool to win the DuPage County Fair Talent Competition. Rich and Kathy Costner are the proud parents. And that's all I have for this evening, clerk.
Thank you, mayor. As part of Warrenville and Bloom, I'd like to thank the Western DuPage County Chamber of Commerce, it's a long name, for their support. They had Warrenville and Bloom share the fifty-fifty raffle at the Summer Days Friday and Saturday, and we were able to raise two, over two thousand dollars. So Warrenville and Bloom got a thousand dollars and Larry Hassel, who's a former city employee, now retired, got the other half. So very generous people who were at the Summer Days and we, thank, thank you for your support. Thanks.
Thanks, M.I. Treasurer.
Yes, I want to just bring everybody's attention and whenever we are looking at a high-density residential community, whether it be this one or any of the other ones, we also think about activities in Warrenville such as bike and walk-to-school days so that we, you know, are, are considering with like sidewalk plan that we have ways for the children to get safely to the schools and parks, and that should always be part of our consideration.
Thank you. Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
I just wanted to continue to encourage everyone to come to our, our wonderful concerts on the commons, which are held every Wednesday at seven o'clock, and the Bob Walters Commons, which sits right between this city hall and the library next door. We have our weekly free live music concerts all summer long, every Wednesday, except the Fourth of July this year for obvious reasons. We've been having some really great entertainment. I've been out to a couple of the concerts myself. The library's doing a great job organizing that, those events and bringing a pretty wide variety of musical acts here to town for everyone to enjoy. So my thanks to the library for their work on that and just an invitation to the public to keep on coming out for our, our fun events. And that is supported by the Hotel Motel Grant program. Thanks.
Okay, city administrator? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Davalos?
Did you mention tomorrow night? Did I miss it?
Oh.
Goodness gracious.
National Night Out.
My big, my big night.
No wonder the chief was looking at me with his narrow eyes.
Tomorrow night at Cerny Park, I think it starts at six, right, chief?
Five.
Oh, five.
Five o'clock.
Is National Night Out Against Crime. And for a town our size, we win an award for this every single year. It's a huge turnout, it's free food, free dinner, it's, all kinds of booths are set up, all kinds of free things are handed out by everybody, there's lots of kids, there's our, there's usually a canine, a dog there, and there's a police officer with that dog and the kids love it. The first time I ever went, I can't remember, maybe five years ago, I don't know, and I sat there in my little chair and I watched this police officer take this dog and do all kinds of things to this dog and then lead the dog around Cerny Park and these kids were like the Pied Piper of Hamline, just following this police officer, and they loved it. It is really a fun night. And it's no cost to you and you walk away with free stuff and free food and everybody come because it's really a good evening.
Thank you, Alderman. Chief, can you augment that with any other comments to get people to show up?
Well, we've won an award, I think we've been running it now about six years and we've run an award five out of the six years. We will have a DJ there tomorrow, free ice cream, again, free food for the kids, so there'll be entertainment, a lot of interactive things that gives a chance for people to come and meet all of our business partners here who are so generous and contribute so many things and maybe learn about some of the new businesses that are here in town and interact with members of the Police Department and also the Fire Protection District because they'll have apparatus out there and firefighters. And we also get a contingent that come from the Illinois State Police and also the DuPage County Sheriff's Department. So it, it's a large event. We usually are drawing about fourteen hundred-plus people a year and we anticipate the same this year, so we hope to see you there.
Great, a great family event. Thank you, Alderman, for reminding me. Anyone else on the Aldermanic end here? Okay, administrator?
Thank you. Couple of quick things. You'll find on the dais tonight, there's a copy of the minutes from the Public Safety and Finance Committee, the whole marked revised. That was brought to my attention, there was some grammatical and just some phraseology things that were a little awkward at best, so those have been corrected. There is nothing that is substantive change to the meaning or the discussion, just a rewording to make it, it read better, flow better, and corrected some grammatical errors that we had. It was a little bit more than Scribner's errors, so instead of just changing them after the fact, I wanted to make sure that we put it out as a revised minutes. If you're comfortable, I would encourage that to be approved. If anybody wants to give it more scrutiny, you can certainly hold those to the next meeting at your discretion. Second item, I was just checking with Christina, we still have, now we've got a captive audience here, we have a position open for a part-time van driver for our Acorn Van Program. If anybody is interested in some regular part-time hours, please come to City Hall or go online and get an application. For some reason, it's a tough role to fill, but it is regular hours, probably about fifteen hours maybe a week. You work with some great people that ride the van and provide a good public service. And we're having trouble finding applications. I don't think everybody is all fully employed in town or we're not a wealthy community, so if you're interested in a job, please apply. Thirdly, Phil Kukler, our Deputy Public Works Director, had a quick comment about Warrenville Road to announce to everybody, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Phil Kukler.
Thank you, mayor. Next week, I'm going to be discussing the future Warrenville Road and the condition of the, the current condition of the road and the pavers. So what I would request is for the members of City Council or not familiar with the condition of the road, please take a- the condition of the road, please take a, the opportunity sometime this week to drive down there and actually get out on foot and walk it. I mean, walk across the crosswalks and see the rutting of the road and that kind of stuff, see the deterioration of the roads. It's going to be important for everyone to understand and discuss next week and how we're going to move forward on Warrenville Road in the future.
Great, so we're looking critically at making improvements there and moving ahead?
That's correct.
Great, okay. Next week, next Monday night at Public Safety, that discussion will take place.
Public Works Committee.
Public Works, okay, great. Thank you, Phil. Anyone else? Attorney?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. For approval, I will first ask to remove items C-6C and item 6F. So when the motion is made, could we not include those in the consent agenda, please? Alderman Widener?
Yes, with the removal of item C and item F, I move to approve the agenda for the August 6, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as amended for this evening. We need also the approval of a couple of sets of minutes. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the minutes of the July 16, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting, and to approve the minutes of the revised July 23, 2018 Public Safety and Finance Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting.
Second. Motion and a second discussion of those minutes. Again, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. The consent agenda for this evening, item 6A, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02018-31, amending the City Code Regarding Environmental Advisory Commission Roles and Responsibilities. B, accept Plan Commission Recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02018-32, approving a major amendment to the Plan Unit Development Plans approved by Ordinance Number 2299 for Warrenville Grove Animal Hospital at 3 South, 481 Batavia Road. D, accept Staff Recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02018-34, approving the sanitary sewer easement agreement on the Conforti property. E, accept Staff Recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02018-35, approving change order number two to the contract for the Glen Drive South sanitary sewer and water main improvements with construction by Campco Incorporated. G, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and pass resolution R2018-36, approving an intergovernmental police services agreement between the City of Warrenville and the Felony Investigative Assistance Team. H, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and pass resolution R2018-37, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Warrenville and Northern Illinois Police Alarm System. I, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and pass resolution R2018-38, approving the new contract with Municipal Systems Incorporated. J, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and pass resolution R2018-39, waiving the competitive bidding process and approving an agreement with Tony's Tree Service for tree removal services on the western portion of the Land and Avenue sanitary sewer project in the amount of $15,100. K, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and approve the purchase of, won 2019 Ford Utility AWD Police Interceptor through the State of Illinois Contract Number 152. L, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and approve the revised Employee Personnel Manual. M, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission, regular meeting held on June 19, 2018. N, receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission Zoning Board of Appeals, regular meeting held on June 21, 2018. O, receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission Zoning Board of Appeals, regular meeting held on July 19, 2018. P, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission Zoning Board of Appeals, special meeting held on July 26, 2018. Q, receive and file report of invoices paid up to August 1, 2018, in the amount of $65,636.69. R, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before August 20, 2018, in the amount of $789,257.21. And S, receive and file report of debit and credit card expenditures for the month of June 2018, in the amount of $8,371.79. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second by Alderman Wilson. Roll call, please.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you, M.Y. We'll go back to item 6C. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Alderman Bavir?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendations, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02018-33, approving the sanitary sewer plat of easement on the Ashauer property.
Second by Alderman Berry, discussion? Alderman Ashauer?
I'll be abstaining from this vote. The easement was granted so that our neighbor could have sewer services based on the newer sewer that is coming out to Route 59.
Okay, very good. Anyone else seeing none? Roll call, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer abstains.
Okay, motion carries. We'll return then to item 6F. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Alderman Davalos?
I would like to make a motion to accept the Plan Commission Recommendation and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance approving the preliminary plot of subdivision, rezoning preliminary planned unit development plans, and various PUD subdivision control ordinance, and local storm order ordinance designed variations for the MI Homes and Atlantic Realty Partners Everton Mixed Use Project.
At the southeast corner, you've got another.
I don't have that.
Item F, are you looking at the?
I'm looking at the council requested.
Oh, I'm reading off the motion.
Aye.
Just a second. I read off the motion. I didn't read off this page. I'm so sorry. At the southeast corner of Route 59 and Ivan Albright Street.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Goodman. First, we'll have discussion by the council, okay? And then we'll have you folks, whoever wishes to speak tonight is welcome to speak. If you were at the public hearing in front of the Plan Commission and you made comments there, those comments were recorded and were provided to all of the Aldermen ahead of time, so that you're free to repeat those comments if you like, but it's not necessary. I assume they've all read their backups and they've seen the comments before, but everybody will get a chance. Just a couple of ground rules. We're all Warrenville people here. I would expect that you would respect each other by being silent, by no clapping, no interrupting of people. Let people say their piece, listen respectfully. That's what we owe our neighbors. You also owe that to the elected officials who are here virtually every Monday night doing the city's business. Most of the time, you're not here, which means you're pretty happy with what's going on. Tonight, you might have a bone to pick, but at least respect them for the fact that they're here taking a four-year commitment to do the city's business. So again, we're all Warrenville. Be respectful, listen to everybody. I understand that you're going to disagree, maybe strongly with people, but listen to them, make your peace, and we will listen to you, and that's how we'll move forward. First, again, we'll do any discussion with the council. I have a list of people that wish to speak. It might go faster if you just come up and get in line and wait your turn at the podium. Just first give your name and your address, and then you're free to say what you feel is necessary to say. So as soon as the council is done with whatever they have to add to the meeting tonight, then I will invite you up, and we will listen to everyone. Okay, council, any discussion on this item before we have public input? Alderman? Ashauer, I stand up first, I think.
I've been opposed to this from the beginning at the first planning commission. It's not anything new. As says Alderman Bavir, we're the two Aldermen that represent Ward 1 where this project is taking place. The, a lot of the people don't understand that when it's high density, it means apartments. Most people here probably assume that the attached townhouses are high density. There's a lot of different things that are, might cause for a problem with this. The, just a quote from our land use discussion area four in the Economic Development Plan Report. It's just a refresher. I don't know if you guys have reread this, but I've gone through it with a fine-toothed comb. Determining the location for commercial and residence use play a role in Warrenville's economic development deliberation. The white paper prepared for this project suggests a focus on housing developments of increased density to add more residents and potential customers. The appropriate density for such housing is an issue that requires further discussion and consideration of where it may be located, as it will influence the overall character and quality of life in the community. Discussion during city council input acknowledged that higher-density housing options could provide economic development benefits. It was also noted that offering different housing options for groups such as empty nesters and young professionals who are not interested in single-family detached homes has merit. Building high-end townhomes was commonly suggested due in part to its ability to create more density without compromising the rural qualities of the city. In general, incorporating some type of high-density housing has been seen as a possibility, if done with an attractive form. Other populations to consider include groups such as Fermilads, contract workers who seek high-quality short-term lease options. The CCRS, the Muslim property right next to us, property development was noted as, by most, as an option for townhouse or duplex developments. That, that, we've heard a lot about the comprehensive plan. That's in the comprehensive plan. The, I, I don't think that we need the volume that the resident, the apartments will bring to that area. It's not something that I had looked for, that high-density, in any of my understanding of any of the conversations we had. I don't agree with some of the items in the staff report. There's, there's a comment about supported by, by trend of development. There is no high-density apartments in any proximity, and comparing Monarch Landing to this type of apartments is not appropriate. That's what's in the support by trend of development from our, our staff report. The... There's another portion of it that says that a higher-density development will create less regional traffic congestion or parking problems than low-density development. I read it. I don't understand the logic behind that. It just plain doesn't make sense to me. The, along with the fact that there is very strong public opposition to the, the character and content of this development. I don't have any trouble with high-density. I don't have any trouble with townhouses owner-occupied. I think we've already approved enough apartments for this year. We have, it's been pointed to as a possible need based on demographics. We, for anybody who isn't aware of it, we already have approved 750 new apartments in Cantera, and I don't think we need them here. I don't think it's a good front door to our community. And we've kind of put this whole development in the hands of a developer that has a 1.5 customer satisfaction rating out of five stars. So I have more concerns than just the development. It's about how it's being done, by whom, and how we've kind of turned the development of the apartment complex, in a funny way, to a surrogate. I don't, that's, I just don't like the development, and I won't support it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos?
Is there any chance that, I would actually rather speak after I heard the citizens' comments, if that's okay? I just would like, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Bavir?
Yeah, I echo Alderman Ashauer, and gotten a lot of emails, phone calls from residents in Ward 1, and I support all the people in Ward 1. I will not be in favor of this project myself. Thank you.
Alderman Hoffman?
Yeah, I've been opposed to this multiple-family housing for, since the beginning. I voted against all of it all the way along. And one simple reason is because the amount of population they're bringing into town, it's not going to be comparable to the amount of property taxes that are going to be paid to the city. The city basically gets three and a half million dollars a year in property taxes for 13,000 people. With these four complexes, I've heard anywhere from three to four thousand people are going to be added to town, but we're not even going to get 10% of the property taxes. Who's going to make up the rest? And I can go as far as that, because they talk about the sales tax. You get state income tax, you get the gas tax, electric tax, phone tax. The fire department doesn't get that. The park district doesn't get that. The library can't tap into that. Either can their pensions. Where does that come from? Either they're going to have to lower services, lower services, or increase taxes. And it's going to be increased on everybody, not on just those developments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I too want to make my comments after I hear the citizens' remarks, but I can't let this go a second time. That's just misinformation when you say that 13,000 residents are paying all the property taxes. That's ignoring all the property taxes that are paid by commercial and industrial properties in Warrenville, too. So that, that just doesn't make any sense. Are you implying the target doesn't pay any, pay any property taxes?
Alderman Hoffman?
Commercial developments pay, and they don't use. Commercial developments are not sending kids to school, they're not, sending people going to the library, people going to the park district. I have to believe that their police calls would be less, I have to believe their fire calls would be less. So I don't add those in there, because they're paying more than they're using, and that's what lowers the people's property taxes. I have to believe the reason why we're not attracting commercial developments is because our taxes are high. Warrenville's, last year, I don't know what they are this year, I haven't looked it up, but last year, Warrenville's property taxes were point, or 8.5 Naperville's, or rather 8.2 Naperville's was 6.5. With that much of a difference, corporations are not going to move in town, because it's all about the money. Thank you.
Alderman Goodman?
I happen to live in Warrenville, and I'm in the West Chicago School District instead of the Community Unit 200 District that I lived in as a child in Warrenville and grew up in and went to. And my property taxes, as a result of being in the two school districts from West Chicago instead of the one consolidated school district for District 200, is as a rate compared to my parents, who also live in Warrenville, 30% higher. So 30% higher difference. So if you're trying to imply that the city property taxes, which are less than 6% of my tax bill, and I think, I mean, something like 8% of, 9%, all right, of, of people who live in District 200's tax bill, that that is going to have more of an impact on people's property taxes than something that the school district does, or switching from one school district to another. I mean, your math just does not add up. I, saying that Naperville pays a higher tax rate, Naperville has so many more businesses. It's, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. When you say that people in Warrenville are getting cheated, or saying that we're paying higher taxes, we have an excellent school district here. And it's true that Maple Hill, my neighborhood, is in the West Chicago School District, but there's almost no children in Maple Hill. It's, there's a lot of seniors, so yes, they, they have to go to the West Chicago School District, but they're paying much more to live in the West Chicago School District for, I mean, I personally, I maybe I'm biased, I think the Warrenville School District's a lot better, and we pay much lower property taxes in the Warrenville School District.
So... Let's, let's try to get back to the development. I understand. Okay? Any other comments that you want to make before we talk, while you listen to the public? Okay, again, I invite you to come up, say your piece, try to be... Again, I invite you to come up, say your piece, try to be brief. A number of people want to talk tonight. It's okay to say I agree with the person that was up here a minute ago. We understand that. This is not the time, however, to ask questions of the council or the developer. That opportunity was at the public hearing, so tonight is a comment period, okay? So you're welcome to say whether you support this, you don't support it, give your reasons. Any of those things that you want to say are fine, but we are not going to be responding to questions. That part of the process has already been accomplished. So whoever wants to start out, come on up, and those of you who want to follow. Yeah, I was going to just not use the list. You know, if you're not on the list, it's okay. If you came here and you want to speak, we're here to listen to you. So whoever wants to lead off. And then feel free to start a line, too, which will facilitate getting us out of here before midnight.
My name is Patricia Joseph. I live at 30W 019 Wembley Drive in Warrenville. I had spoken at the prior meeting and indicated that I thought that it was, this development was antithesis to what Warrenville is.
Oh yeah, please, the other thing that might be beneficial for especially the folks at home is if you take the microphone out and hold it and keep it kind of close, and then just hand it to the next person, that way everyone can hear you.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions that need to be answered, and one is about the Tiff District. What's the length of the Tiff District? Is it 20 years?
23 years.
23 years. So a lot of us are going to be dead by that time, you know? And I'm thinking, I'm thinking, why should we support something that's not going to be, I mean, we're not going to be here to enjoy it, but that's neither here nor there. I have a question about the school districts you mentioned before, that part of the development is going to be in Naperville District 203. Those people going to have a Naperville address or a Warrenville address?
Yeah, that's not this development. That's in Cantera. That's a different development. This one will be entirely in District 200.
Okay, that answers their question. I've lived in three, three-floor walk-ups many, many times, and it is difficult.
Okay, remember the mic, please.
It's difficult to carry your groceries up for your family. It's difficult to buy new things, furniture, and get it up to your apartment. I don't understand why there can't be a service elevator in those apartments. If we must have apartments, at least make them accessible. It's, it's not going to be attractive to people to move into a three-story walk-up if they don't have a service elevator to move their furniture. And I think that that's something that the community and the developers and the rest of us should consider. Now, Alderman Ashauer said something about public transportation, which we don't have. There is no public transportation. I would love to see a bus running up and down 59 from North Avenue down to the shopping center. I would take it. I don't like driving, and I think that that's something else that you have to consider, is that the traffic. I just spent 10 minutes going one mile on Route 59 and sat at that Duke Parkway light through three green lights because I couldn't move. And I know that there's road construction going on, but every year we have a construction, we have construction, so it's not going to go away. It's going, it's going, the amount of people and vehicles that are going to be enclosed in this thing is going to make a serious impact on the traffic, and I don't go for that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
My name is Don Clevenger, and I live on Williams Road 3S100, Williams. Don't be coming by the house, though. I just have a couple, I just have a couple of comments. I think that the, I think, I'm for, I'm in favor of development. I'm in favor of, did I just do something? You have to turn off your machine here. I just, I just touched a button. I'm in favor of development, but I think you've got the. Excellent. I think you've got the number of apartments and the number of townhouses mixed up. We should have something like 259 townhouses and 89 apartments. We've got all kinds of apartments all over the place, Country Ridge, et cetera, et cetera, and I think that would be a good way to change this development. The other, I drove through several of the developments in town today, namely Thornwell, Summer Lakes, Emerald Green, Fox Hollow, Maple Hill, and Country Ridge. And I noticed one thing. During the day, I'll give you an example of Thornwell because I've been in there at night dropping people off. During the day, there weren't many cars in Thornwell, but at night, when I dropped this young kids off, the place is loaded with cars. It's wall, it's bumper-to-bumper cars all the way, all the way around that whole, that whole complex. And it tells me one thing, that 1.91 or 1.95, whatever that figure is that they're using for parking spaces and everything in this development, it's off. It should be something like, you got to figure at least two to two and a half cars per unit because you've got mom and dad driving and you've got one of the, one of the children somewheres that's become a driver, and they're driving, too. So those are the comments, and my last little thing that I'm going to mention is sidewalks. I've mentioned sidewalks before, and it's probably a sore subject, but we need sidewalks in town. How are the people going to walk out of that development? You can't all drive out. They've got to walk, and they've got to walk someplace, and there's no sidewalk that's going along 59 that I know of, and I don't know that there's a sidewalk that's going down Butterfield Road. I think it is on the other side of the road, but not down on their side. So there's got to be good traffic lights and everything like that if you're going to have a development. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I'll pass it on to the next person.
Thank you.
My name is George Onesam. I'm at 29W 463 Amber Lane. We're to the east of the project, the Climen Project. I've been here a few times now for the meeting and absolutely against the development. I just don't understand, I am also in favor of development of towns, and we, and every town does need multifamily homes as well as single-family homes. But the size of this project in the Climen property, it's crammed. We're still talking about access here and parking there and all these other things that should have been figured out months ago. And so I just don't understand what the city management and council and the Planning Commission is thinking about. It's like, it's like having a big pot of pasta in front of you, and your eyes are bigger than your stomach. And the development of all this, all these apartments and the other two projects or three projects besides the Climen Project is definitely going to not raise us by 5% or 10%. It's going to raise the population by 20% or more, and the, it's, we're not ready for it. And second of all, it's a wonderful city. I came here six, seven years ago. This is just a wonderful, small town, and there's no reason why we can't build some single-family homes along with some townhomes in the Climen property area, keep the noise, the light pollution down, help to keep the prairie path, that beautiful prairie path that runs through our town that we're so blessed to have. The, we're going to have, you know, a dramatic increase in traffic in that area as other people are going to, as has already been said. We're going to, you know, it's going to be a big burden to our city services. I've mentioned this before, other towns have done very well designing single-family and townhome-type projects along busy roads like 59 and Butterfield. It's been done over and over again. We've kind of done it on Winfield Road and even Ferry Road, so there's no reason at all to have.